I'd rather do it.
How you doing?
Good, thanks.
Old man.
Okay.
She was calling me.
You've heard me this?
Yes. Get some synonyms for some of the word changes.
You know something, am I on your point to be grilled?
Oh, it's good. Grilled at the stake of the state.
And so tell you.
I'll change colors in about a second. You got an armor shield or something?
Do you want this one?
This is fine. Okay, I guess we're ready to go. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting board there for the committee of the whole. September. Just like the welcome, Brandon, nice to have you here. Put a port in there for me a few minutes. I mean, I think councillor Hughes might go as well, so I'd like to welcome him in as well. So I'll start with the opening prayer and we'll have councillor Dahl do that first, please.
Our Father in heaven, we the town administration, citizens of Carson come before you this day in our committee of the whole with you. We pray for thy spirit to be with us as we meet and we have good discussion and be unified in our decisions. We are grateful for the privilege that we have serving on this council and being a part of the community of Carson. Be thankful for this blessing in life in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, thanks, councillor Dahl, appreciate that. Uh, just, uh, right now I have one addition from Elton Link, which is one of their number nine, B, correspondence. Put that on there. Any other adoptions or any other additions for the agenda? Okay, make sure.
Move to the left.
Okay. By councillor Mayor, or by councillor Mayor. Mayor Skow with that. Right, yeah. Okay. Okay, move by Mayor Skow. Questions on that there, all the favor? Um, adoption of permits for June 4th, like they're also in the chair. Councillor Dahl noticed that except the commitments of June 4th, all of them are curious. Uh, we have the one delegation, Brandon Jensen, who started engineering technology for our town, so.
The project report update for, for 2013, so Brandon, if you don't mind, we'll hear from you there for a little bit there.
So we've been pretty busy this year, I think. I don't know how many years it's been, but, um, overall things seem going pretty well. I'll just kind of go through the different departments with, uh, starting with the water and wastewater. Uh, they have the UV treatment upgrade that they're working on, um, that is going to be, um, probably middle of November is when that's going to be getting finalized.
A little louder, please.
Graham, can you turn the mic up?
Um, so that, that will be the middle of November. That, uh, that'll be getting worked on. They just have to wait till water levels are a little bit lower before they can start doing that upgrade. Um, they also have the PLC and scanning upgrade, I guess is what they call that. And that has to be done after the UV treatment, so that'll be to the end of November. Um, we also have a sewer line replacement that's on First Street East. Um, that's the one that kind of plugged up a little bit there that we're working on. And so that, we should be able to start on that, um, in the next week. We'll try to get that replaced and back to working order with that. Um.
Is that First Street East where there were the many different houses and that?
You're talking Stormsir.
What are we talking about?
Stormsir.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, right. So. Okay, all right.
Then we have, uh, with parks, they did, uh, just recently ICE Center assessment. That was done last week. Um, according to everything, ranks and everything looked good with that assessment. There was, uh, more trust that looked like that somewhere, but nothing, um, to worry about or anything. Everything looked good that way. So that was done last week. Uh, we also have scheduled for some campground renovation, washroom renovations, uh, but they're now actually kind of focusing on the reunion center right there, so it'll be done. So that's what they're focusing right now. Um, and so they could still be working on that campground renovation later, maybe in October, but we'll see how things go there. Um, and then we also had down for, for players benches to, to let those, um, replaced. He said we're still hoping to get that going this year before the weather sets in, so they're just going to be trapped up some plants and stuff that way. Um, electrical, they have their 25K upgrade that they're working on. And they said they should have that all finished up in about three weeks, so they're looking good on that, um, that way.
Chairman, if we could, if we could, then maybe back up to recreation. Does the agri dome fall under that department, Parks and Recreation?
Well, it might, it would fall under that umbrella, but they work independently from the town, so is there a specific question for the agri dome?
Well, there, there is some interest regarding the structural integrity of the building and the buildings, sort of the additions on to the agri dome. And I was just curious if there had been any examination of, of that facility, the agri dome facility.
Jeff can speak to that because he had a meeting last week regarding that.
Yeah, we had, Brendan mentioned the ICE Center assessment. Um, the same structural engineer that came down to go through the trusses of the ice rink, I asked him to go up to the agri dome afterwards, so Randy took him up there. They met with Rod Olson, I believe is the manager up there now. And he went through it, so he's sending me this week his, um, his review and his assessment of trusses. Now, he gave me a verbal that, um, yes, there's some problems and yes, the addition is pulling away from the main structure. And he thinks what happened is when there was a heavy snow load, it, it kind of, it bowed the trusses in the middle a little bit and that was the weakest point that they could pull out of. So he's going to recommend a series of fasteners just to basically tie them back into the building and he feels that, that it should, uh, should hold okay. It was in, it, it wasn't done properly in the first place. The fasteners holding the trusses to the original building were meant for, um, I guess, vertical load and weren't meant to hold the structure into the building. So if you hold away, there's really nothing stopping it. They're just meant to hold the, the load.
Shear.
Yeah, the shear load. So we had some discussion and I'll be getting a formal assessment from here right away.
Thank you.
Um, public works are, uh, doing some hog patching right now on all the areas that we've done, uh, different projects on services, replacements, stuff like that. Um, and they're also looking at, uh, they did roll the oiling as well this year and they're just looking at, um, how that's holding out.
Can I ask you a question? Read him out. Regarding, uh, First Street East, as seen last year, there were a lot of repairs done. I mean, but all the paving has now been redone. Is that something that will be finished this year?
That's what he's talking about, the hot patching, all of those service connection areas.
So those will be finished at that point?
Yep, they're working on them right now.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so yes, yeah, going right into paving, uh, the clinic parking lot was obviously finished last week. Um, the line painting was done. And, uh, from there, uh, they're getting their equipment ready so that they can, uh, start working on Fourth Avenue, on the hotel and fire hall there and then start getting that prepped for, for paving and then they're also going to cross along the First Street East to get the curb and gutter and, um, repair the paving on that as well. Um, so their equipment should be, uh, talking to them, it should be arriving this week to get started on that, so the paving should be starting next week. After that, we're moving on to Three Avenue, um, the cul-de-sac up there, where we've had to do a lot of repair work on it to get it ready for, for paving and a lot more, uh, for work. Um, yeah, they dig down basically on that job. There wasn't a lot of stuff made, so that was good material to work on there, so we had to dig down and repair that. So that's kept our guys pretty busy that way for the last, I don't know, while. I think for the most part, that's what we've had going on currently. Um, we just, this spring, we finished up the phase two job, done it relatively well that way and, uh, can we answer your question again? Got any questions?
Okay, councillor, read that.
Uh, Brendan, on the electrical upgrade that you talked about, the 25 KV, is that just on the portion they're working on? That's not complete, it's just the portion that they're working on right now?
Like, yeah, there's still more to do, right, down the next few years to, to totally upgrade?
Yeah. As far as they're pulling off for the school.
Yeah, that's just this phase of the project. And they, they changed their plan due to the construction of the elementary school, um, because they required some additional service there, so they just moved locations, um, and included that for this year's project.
Yeah, that's kind of what I.
Brandon, I have a question here, just, um, in regards to, um, their infrastructure. Like, is there, do we have correct mapping of where each, our, our infrastructure is? Because I know there's a couple incidences or a couple of times there where people weren't sure whether there was or was not, uh, infrastructure in those locations or whatever after doing Brendan Cameron, you know, and we found out that there was indeed, uh, infrastructure in that area where it was said there wasn't any infrastructure before. Is there a need to update or are we missing? Is there something that, uh, that we should be doing to make sure that, uh, we know exactly where our underground infrastructure is here?
I know we do and Dave was working on that as well, updating all the information. Um, the four year left in AutoCAD, making sure that we do that. Everything up to date is, as you can see, it is. Um, there is a few rare cases that find where, I don't know if he hasn't, he hadn't got to that point of updating that information, but, uh, it's, for the most part, we're pretty good for finding that stuff. I know there was a few cases where, where we did a lot and feel, I don't know, it needed to be updated to what we didn't have.
Maybe, maybe just to add to that, what we've found is historical documentation isn't always as accurate as it should be. What we're requiring now is as-built drawings, so as new infrastructure is put in place, we have the mapping, um, but we are working, we understand there's some areas in town where there's still some problems that we're not fully aware of how the infrastructure runs. And every time we're made aware of those situations, then Brandon is updating the mapping to try and keep everything current.
Any other questions for, for Brandon? Okay, thank you very much, Brandon, really appreciate what you do for the town and thanks for coming and I appreciate that.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thanks. Item six, business around background. Mary, is there anything that we needed to do with that? Item seven, uh, new business. Uh, seven A, we'll have administration actually speak to both of, uh, A1 and A2. So we'll start with the three-year strategic plan review that we'll have Mary in this, just over, kind of help yourself with that there.
Um, this is just a follow-up. We've presented a draft business strategic plan to council in the past and we've been working to try to get that document as cleaned up as possible. These strategies are based on council's goals and objectives that have been identified here in your strategic planning sessions. We understand right now the budget timeframe and budget dollars aren't in here, but we're asking for council to give us some feedback on this. Let us know if we're missing something, if we're on the wrong track anywhere. Um, and once we have this approved in principle, then we'll put the timeframes and the budget dollars towards the document and we will get final approval at the council meeting. I hope to have that by the end of September. This is a very good guiding document for this council, but as well future councils. Um, obviously, when the new council comes in, they all have their own strategic planning session. This is a working document, it's not something that is written in stone, so it may be tweaked a little bit, but it, it allows the new council to see where you intended to go and what strategies you have in place to reach those goals. So if you have any questions or any input for us, now's the time, I'd like to have that so we'd be able to finalize this document.
The chart here, I'm noticing black, white, the left-hand colored, what is finished?
Yes, and right now the, the chart, you're talking the revenue expenditures by department? Yeah, right now it's not linked to any data and we would put that in color list, but it's just simply to show you that that was the intent, that we would put that, um, chart in there.
Okay.
Sorry, Mary Skow, then councillor, read that.
Um, Mr. Chairman, nothing really, really new, but just in the past few days, I've had people comment to me of, uh, the, the, and I'm looking on page, just so, you know, I'm looking at, uh, activity number three, work program for loitering, vagrancy, and that center bylaw, animal enforcement, uh, talking about disgusting body food such as spitting by one of the banks and slipped and just about had a very serious fall. Um, it's, it's a, it's a problem that's not going to go away and so we just need to make sure that, uh, as much as possible, we focus all reasonable resources on, uh, the kinds of things that are a result of that loitering on our main street. And, uh, I don't know what some of the solutions are in the past. Uh, public bathroom has been talked about, but short of having it withstand fire department hose to come and hose it down every week or so, I'm not just exactly sure how that, you know, what the solution might be. But just so that we can, uh, protect the integrity of at least that segment of Main Street business between, uh, Third and, and Second Avenue on Main Street is, is pretty critical.
Mary, in our capital budget?
Councillor Dahl, oh, just councillor.
Just can I, can I give my comment first, then, then your turn?
Okay, go ahead.
All right, yeah, just, there's just one, uh, thing that I added and I, I think there was something else that I did, but I can't find it and maybe I'll find it later, but in, under the, on the second page, uh, success, success factors and number of bullets, I just added one more that I thought could be considered a success factor and that would be increase in population, uh, at the end of that.
These success factors were taken from your strategic planning session in 2012.
Right, yeah, I just, as I looked at that, I just thought, you know, that, that would be a, another success factor that could be considered as if, if the population, we get a net increase in population would be.
Do, do you want us to add that to the document? Is that council's?
I'd make that suggestion that we could add that.
It's always a, it's always a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, Mary, do you need anything else other than that?
No, that's all right.
Uh, councillor Dahl and councillor.
Mary, on your budgeting, I don't know if it's possible or not, or feasible or not, to do a five-year capital budget and a three-year operating budget.
Um, we will develop, if you see in the plan here, we will develop a five-year capital plan, which will address budget dollars. So yes, we will have a three-year operating and capital budget, but a five-year capital plan.
Thank you.
Councillor, read that.
If you don't mind me going back to the, uh, work program for loitering and vagrancy. I had a fellow stop me on the street the other day and, uh, asking me, why don't we have a quarter potty, uh, maybe behind the Royal Bank in that area? Well, I know we own a piece of land there, not a big piece of land, but I'm wondering why we couldn't have something like that. It's not a perfect solution, but at least we can get somebody to come and comp it out when the need is.
Well, yeah, we can look into that, for sure. I, I don't know that that needs to be part of the strategy.
No, I'm just thinking as an idea, I don't want to lose the idea. It's not what he said.
Okay, yeah, we'll make, we'll make.
Just an idea.
Yeah, and I've gone through here, Mary, and I think, uh, you know, the strategic plan, I mean, that, or that we put together for the, for the next few years, I think that's, you know, it's very well done and I think it's, you know, I think, I think that's something that is at the point where we don't want that, I think, that, you know, the draft is, is a good draft.
Thank you, council. Yeah. Not only does it give council some, um, direction and some focus, it also gives administration that focus when we're putting our budgets together. We want to make sure that we have identified all of these strategies within our budget. And, you know, um, as you're well aware, we've gone through a number of budget processes with you. There's always things that are deemed important, um, but sometimes we have to prioritize those important items due to budget constraints. And so this will give us a little more direction and a little more focus as we move forward.
I just want to ask you regarding activity number eight, servicing of industrial land.
Under which section, councillor, sorry?
Page 21. I'm just wondering, uh, when we talk about industrial land, are we only talking industrial, true industrial, are we looking at commercial industrial?
I think we will be looking at highway commercial, so we industrial and industrial.
Okay, so the title will remain as is?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And that would be identified, it says create a development plan. Those three uses would be identified in the development plan.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any further questions for?
Just another, another comment. And, uh, I'm sure administration can, you know, put this on the back burner, but economic development, I think, is going to have, or is having some discussions regarding wind generation co-ops, because those are legal as long as they're under one megawatt. And so maybe that's something that, uh, could find its way onto some strategic planning. I'm not sure where we put them, I may be on the east part of town, but, uh, again, that's something that we should probably, uh, put on an agenda for discussion. And I'm thinking, uh, probably at the first retreat of the new council in, uh, in January or February of 2014 would be something to try to have a presentation on to see where that might fit.
Yeah, just to speak to the economic development, we didn't go into detail in here with the strategic plan, because the economic development has their own three-year business plan.
Okay.
So it would link to this and I believe under here, the activity is to create an economic development, um, three-year business plan. So we would incorporate that into this.
If I, if I may, uh, I just came from South Grove and South Grove will release, uh, toolkit regarding renewable energy and wind energy and will be given at a human name.
Okay, good, that's good. Any other questions?
So do you need a recommendation to accept the draft?
Yeah.
The addition, sir?
A recommendation to accept it in principle and then we'll put the timeframe and the budgets together.
I'll make that both. We, uh, recommend to council to approve this planning principle.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor? Sorry. I'm not accepting. Okay, uh, uh, once again, we'll probably have Mary or Jeff speak on the shared services delivery project updates, um, seven A two.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to update council, we, as you're aware, we were approved for the, uh, RCP grant for the shared service review, which is the town of McGrath, town of Carson, village of Glenwood, village of Hillspring and Carson County, all inclusive. Uh, we have engaged the services of Harold Johnsroot Consultant and he was actually here last week. He met with all of the CAOs of those municipalities. He also met with the village of Glenwood and the village of Hillspring councils. So he is now taking back, we received a questionnaire, um, he was looking for a lot of documentation from each of the municipalities. He's taken all of that back down and will be doing a review. He intends to, um, have a draft to the CAOs by the end of November, um, that we will keep councils updated as we move forward. And then the final report and recommendations with the models will be to all of the councils by the end of February, uh, 2014. So, um, I know the villages were hoping that something would be in place prior to the election. Uh, the difficulty was this was, this entire project was hinged on the grant. Uh, none of us had the resources to pay for that subject to grant, non-grant approval. So, um, once that was approved, we actually engaged the services immediately. So it, we want to make sure that whatever models we present to the councils are sustainable models and that we're not simply looking at a quick fix for any one of the municipalities. So, um, I'm excited about the project. The consultant seems to be really knowledgeable about the outcome that we intend and, um, so far things are looking really good with the project, so, all right.
Perfect, yeah.
Any questions?
Mary, but just, just maybe an update regarding the grant for the waste management. Can you give us a little bit of?
I can, I just received notification that the grant on the waste, uh, project has been approved.
Oh, wow.
So it'll be on the next page of the agenda, the notification. So I'm waiting for the conditional grant agreement to come and then, um, I will meet with the solid waste authority board and, or their committee at least, and start that process.
All right, my difficulty is that next week or in two weeks' time, there will be the meeting, the regular monthly meeting.
Oh, the, the chief council.
Yeah, councillor, could you place me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Actually, I may contact Suzanne and see if I can attend that meeting just to present the project.
Yeah, I listen, yes.
If that's all right.
Sure.
I think that would be, um, probably a very valuable process.
Yeah, I think if you put it on the agenda, it would be quite nice.
Uh, we're still waiting for one resolution.
Um, yes.
So if that community chooses not to pass that resolution to participate in the grant, we may have to amend the grant slightly, but I don't anticipate that that will have any effect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mary, appreciate that. Uh, seven B, uh, under others, seven B one, September council's social date there. Just looking to see if there's interest in holding a, uh, social gathering for the current council, uh, before the, before the, the new council is, is elected for the 2013, the next four years beyond after, so we're just kind of looking to see if there's any interest in, in getting together for a social, looking at husbands and wives, for wives and husbands. It's up in the air. No, I'm, I'm.
Mr. Chairman, uh, getting, having given a little thought to this, the idea came that, uh, October the first is Tuesday, that's committee of hope. Committee of hope typically lasts about an hour and a half. Waterton's only about a half an hour drive away and the Bay Shore dining is still open for, uh, till the middle of the month, so I thought maybe to go up to the Bay Shore, uh, it, it still only ties up one night. And, uh, so I guess that would be my suggestion, that we do a council social if council agrees to a social and, uh, that would be the date that I would recommend and I would so move, Mr. Chairman, and I would, was. Chairman, and I was thinking that we go to the Bay Shore of Waterton, I suppose we go into Lethbridge, we go Lethbridge a fair bit, so maybe the other direction of Waterton to the Bay Shore might not be a bad idea.
I only have one problem. What time are you thinking, right after, so about five o'clock?
Well, the committee of hold typically, it's here on being done about 5:30, and so we could probably have reservations in Waterton to Bay Shore at 6:00 or 6:30.
I'm thinking, I won't be able to attend that, if that's, if we can do it the next, the following Tuesday, then we'll, our business will be closed for the season, and then we can, I can do it anytime.
And I don't know that I've got a problem either way, just that, yeah, I don't have a problem either way.
What if it's an actual state?
Sorry, no, that's not, if it would be, for, it'd be the eighth, it'd be the eighth of October.
So if we can go Tuesday the eighth, or whatever, we can do that.
But we need to move our council meetings, because council meetings are normally at five.
Well, we'd probably need, we'd probably need a reservation safer 7:30, something like that.
That'd be okay.
And that's the last week that the Bay Shore is open, but again, that's just one idea.
If you did it later on the first, or whatever, then, you know, I could show up or whatever, right? But we're kind of, we're kind of tied off till, almost till, front of the quarter day.
Well, I mean, to accommodate yourself, and again, this is just, to accommodate yourself, I'm thinking maybe we go later on the first, for the, for the social function. That's if council agrees to it in principle.
Sure, are they open that late, in October?
They're open till 10 o'clock, and we can have all of it.
I'd be okay if we did a little bit later, if we made it for a quarter day.
And if anybody drinks anything stronger than fruit punch, I can drive home.
Is that right? It does need to drive. So is everyone okay with that? What are we looking at, then, October first at 7:45? Is that kind of?
It's a little late.
Well, that's what, yeah, some kind of thing continues, so. If we can do it the following Tuesday, we can do it as early as you want, or?
Well, we have, we have council. So by, by the time we typically done council by seven, so, we still have to go 7:30.
About 6:30-ish, so we would.
Or it doesn't happen, it could be Wednesday, or, it could be any other day besides, not be Tuesday, so.
If it's October the first, that's a committee hold meeting, that'd be at four o'clock.
Saying afterward, yeah.
Yeah, but Counselor Smith's business is not closed until before seven.
If I might, one of the things to consider is the meetings aren't going to, in October, traditionally, prior to an election, will be very long meetings, because you don't put a lot of new items on the agenda, because unless they're critical items, right? So it, it could free up a little more time, you could probably be to Waterton by seven, if your council meeting's at five, you know, an hour-long council meeting, potentially.
Okay, well.
Thanks.
So on the eighth?
So the eighth?
On the over eight.
And we want to try to, hopefully, maybe leave right to her spouses. I would like to suggest that CAO and deputy CAO and spouse be there with us.
Sure.
That would be my suggestion as well. And I would so move, Mr. Chairman, I would amend my motion to have the council social in Waterton with reservations for 7:00 PM at the Bay Shore on the eighth of October.
So recommended by, is it recommended, does that apply to council, I guess, yeah?
I don't think we need a motion, we'll just set it up.
Okay, just set it up, okay.
At the Bay Shore, you said?
On October the eighth. I haven't been at the Bay Shore in a while, but I still think it's probably better to place in Waterton, I mean, other than go to the, well.
Okay, and then, let's see here, moving on, there's seven B, two, looking for a council member, or someone, I think we just need one council member, is that all we're looking for here, I think?
You're talking about the Lethbridge Foundation?
Or for the, yeah, the annual Friends of the Foundation dinner, yeah, just Lethbridge Log on October third.
You know, that's a pretty, I went, Mary, didn't you and I go for their awards event? Do you remember that?
I believe it was Jeff, and you went.
Jeff and I went to, to the awards presentation event a year or so ago.
You and Leonard Perrell went.
What was that?
That's right, because Leonard was there representing the senior. The only reason that I would be interested in going is in the spirit of networking and relationship building. It's probably not a bad idea to be present there, but I mean, I'm not going to be, you know, this late in the, in the term of council, we, we still need to be concerned about relationship building, we still need to be concerned about networking. But again, if, if council does not feel that that's $50 worth, then, you know, that doesn't, I don't take any offense to that, but that's why, why I would go on Thursday the third is for basically networking and relationship building.
Just one comment, we have accessed grants through this foundation in years past, and we intend to apply again with them for the pool, so I think that what the mayor is saying is very wise, that, you know, we do need to support their events when we ask them to support us in return.
Well, I might go, if Ramazak doesn't feel like it's, it's placed to go at that point, I wouldn't mind going.
Well, I think, I think the, the networking, the relationship building, I mean, obviously, things are going to change in six or seven or eight weeks.
Right.
But.
Still the talent.
Still happen to be the mayor for another six or seven or eight weeks, and so I don't intend on abdicating the opportunity to network and build relationships. And so I would, I would opt to do that. I guess the other question remains, do we send myself and my spouse? She's typically not that much of the social butterfly, so with an RSVP for one, for one person, was probably where I would go with that, for, for 7:00 PM. And if something came up that I couldn't make it on the third, certainly Counselor Cronin having expressed some interest, you know, that RSVP, if it had to be changed, it certainly could be changed later than not at all, so.
So we need RSVP, we'll RSVP for the mayor, that's for that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Seven B three, MDSP grant application, I think they're looking for, for the regional collaboration grant, I think they're just looking for support from our municipality to go on, on to that grant, and I think they need participation from all the member municipalities there, so. I believe it's just, yeah, it's just, at the bottom here, they just need, there's just a resolution, or I think that they need an application that they need signed, saying that town of Carson supports that collaboration, collaboration grant, the community, so we're okay with that there, or is there any questions on that, there's support in that grant application?
Are you on motion or?
Yeah, recommendation to council.
Yeah, okay, I guess I'll make that motion, and we recommend to council that we have to support that grant application for the regional collaboration program there.
Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, moving down to nine, under correspondence, just two pieces of correspondence, one from ASO, sorry, nine, I think it's from ASO there. That's just a temporary delay of certain S A T R, which is the Southern Alberta Transit Mission Reinforcement Components, so it's basically just notice, saying that the S A T R components are canceled.
That's okay.
How does that impact on us, this information?
Well, this is the line that Altalink was here to present, and ASO and Altalink had the open houses, looking for public input. The second letter there is from Altalink, and it just clarifies that, that the project for this location is on hold, and they won't be holding any further discussions until they're given direction, otherwise by ASO.
Okay.
So, basically, what it means is the line.
Won't happen.
May not, it's, it's on hold.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, just for the information of council, in the event, there's a couple here at the table who will be returning to the table subsequent to the October election, I suggested to Mary that it would be valuable to have Kevin Phillips give a presentation at the first retreat of council in January or February 2014, because there are a few pieces in the electrical puzzle involved in, in the generation and transmission and providing those services, and the ASO and of course, Altalink and, you know, very, how all those pieces fit together, so if you happen to be here at the council table subsequent to the election, I think it would make some sense to have that information, explaining how all the pieces fit together, and the implications and ramifications, you know, as a very significant decision made by council several months ago, not to sell our distribution lines. And that was a very significant process we went through, and a lot of people in the community still don't understand how all the pieces fit together. But anyway, just for the information, council, I think Mary will make sure that that happens at the retreat in the first of 14.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it's, yeah, nice thirty curve for some new folks, and for some that have been around for a while there, so.
Just maybe it's make a comment that, you know, as we probably all know, that there was a lot of opposition to, you know, questioning of the need of a lot of these lines, and I think, it's good to see that, I think, I think some of that was heard, and it's making a change, but I think it would be good to get an update from the, from the experts on that, and to see maybe how that came about, and how it now affects our, our situation. Hopefully, it would.
Boy, I hate the, end the meeting, so really, I know you all wanted to stay out, but.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, motion to adjourn, and we can go over a second, and turn it back.
So we have lunch, we have.
You can phone your wife and tell her to get.
Yeah, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can get it earlier, that'd be great.
Yeah, she can go wherever for five there, so.
Now, just out of curiosity, since we're adjourned.